Starting to.
Okay, okay, good.
I believe that his expectation for the pain recovery he was gonna have were maybe not quite realistic. And that he's now recognizing what reality might actually be. Making peace with us. Yes, I'm sure it did.
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
Mr. Lefever, you might want to pull your mic down before we start the meeting. Or Judy's gonna yell at me.
Pardon?
Judy will yell at me. See, you might zoom in.
Cindy, can you tell me where the Microsoft Authenticator app is?
I can tell you where mine is.
It says, open yours.
It's on my phone. What in the world?
I tried a bunch of stuff this afternoon. I just couldn't get into this. Now, how do I get my current emails? I gave a lot of time there. Tried to go through Outlook, etc. There you go. What did you do to that? Yeah, that's good. You're in there now.
All right, there you go. It's updating slowly but surely.
If you wanted it through the inbox up there.
Yeah, so it will change it to focused, which means it'll pull out the only the emails it thinks that are important.
I have to see everything.
All of your.
Yeah.
So you want to click on other and then that will bring up all of the emails. These disappeared. And then you will need at some point to do office updates, but you don't need to do that now.
I can do that later.
And this one, same thing. This will give you that authenticator again, which then it's going to want you to put an app on your phone. So that you can say on your phone that you're actually logging into your computer. It's one of those two factor. So that you're always notified when someone's trying to log into your account.
Okay, I'll see if I can find.
So those just, you can just ignore for right now, but they will come back. They are putting the two-factor authentication as a requirement to get a cyber insurance next year.
I've been suspecting that they've been trying to make it hard to get in because the servers are so overloaded, there's no room for it.
Never run out. Never run out of space.
Never say never. Okay.
Check the correct door. I heard it move. No one's standing.
There's a view. Unzoom. Other correction, they weren't.
We were hoping.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we usually shut that one.
Here's, here's how you run a write-in. You hand them out.
That they do.
I don't know yet. I don't know yet.
I'm surprised they got the mail-in results in as quickly as it did this time around after fumbling it the first time.
Three hundred seventy-three votes cast and Inspector Democrat got a hundred and eight.
Um, how are you?
My phone got a hundred and fifty, so he picked up a bunch of the write-ins. Plus, he was the only name on the ballot, so he picked up a point that way. But I got about two hundred thirty-seven or so though. I get very gratifying.
Yeah.
I saw a lot of people going in, so.
I was just.
You had the best turnout.
I mean.
Did I really?
Yep, yours was.
Agreed.
Outstanding. But Mill Creek didn't really get to. Mill Creek had. Got front of that too. That was a lot of door-to-door at Mill Creek.
I'm still got zero there. They said it can take.
Andy, how are you?
Yeah, the writings take a while.
But this is just printed right off the, off the ballot, so just all they gotta do is match it up.
Wait on Zoom right now, too. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Easthamfield Town Support Supervisors Meeting. Tonight is November third, two thousand twenty-one. Tonight's video, our tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will apply and the meeting will be run by a chairman who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Everyone on Zoom will have their microphones muted in order for the audio to be clearly heard during the meeting, but those present online, only one person speaks at a time and they must be recognized by the chairman. This rule will be strictly enforced. For people utilizing Zoom, you'll need to use the chat function to be recognized by a chairman. To be recognized with chat function, you must either be a presenter who's on the agenda or a resident or business owner in Easthamfield Township, which is to comment on an agenda item where you must text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. The steps to speak utilizing Zoom are simple. One, request recognition by a chairman via chat to speak. Two, once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone. Three, after receiving recognition, speak. And four, when done speaking, mute your microphone. For Zoom, any violations of the mentioned rules will be deemed to be acting out of order and your microphone will be muted immediately without warning. Continued violations will result in you being electronically removed from the meeting. Robert's rules apply for all those attending in person. All voting tonight will be done right roll called. Ensure all votes are properly accounted for. Roll call will be conducted by a township manager. There will be no actions taken on the non-agenda items of a non-emergency, non-urgent nature that arise during the meeting. All such items will be referred to staff and will be handled at a later date. Easthamfield Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting purposes or follow chat procedure already discussed for Zoom. Comment is limited to three minutes. It must be about an agenda item being discussed with the exception of public comment at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. No actions will be taken during public comment period for non-agenda items with all issues referred to staff. So now we'll move on to our first agenda. Please rise for the silence and the pledge. Now the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe see it. Okay, our first item of the agenda is our consent agenda. The person consent agenda is approved routine items that require very little debate or discussion. So with that, open up the floor to the consent agenda. Okay, I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Okay, motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the dice have five, nothing.
Mr. Russell.
Yes.
I don't know if you saw my note on the, on the table.
No, I did not.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I have a pencil.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll still go with the five at this point. Okay, next up, we have our action items. The first item is Turkey Hill Store number three twenty-five, final plan. Approve the recording time extension number seven with the stipulation that this extension will be the final extension. I don't know, Ms. Switzer, you want, what was that?
So I pulled this from the consent agenda because that's usually where you see these. This is the seventh request for a time extension. I've reached out to the engineer to alert him to the fact that this will be the final one. And that's why you have that condition on there, that this is the final one. He did get back to me in an email and the information that he provided to me looks like they're gonna probably make the year-end deadline. So they shouldn't need another one, but I don't think we should, I should think we should let them know ahead of time that this will be the last one.
What's driving them having to have this made time extensions?
They have been dealing with the city regarding a pump station towards the back of the property. This is at Old Tree, Old Tree and Centerville. Where the Turkey Hill Office Building was. And they've also had some problems getting a tenant for the other lots they have in, in that property. And sometimes it changes, then they have to rework things. But that really isn't the township's problem. They should really just follow the plan and then ask for modifications afterward.
All right. So has the city issue been resolved at this point, you think?
I believe so, yeah. He didn't mention anything about the city. They have it, their planning module arrived. They're talking to Scott Hane, our engineer, about minor issues. MPDS permit was approved with some technical comments. So, yeah, it sounds like they're there.
Any discussion on the board?
My only comment is that the property's beginning to look a little ragged, grass is long, shrubbery is overgrown. So hopefully they'll gonna get to it.
I can reach out to the engineer and let him know that.
Thank you.
I think they've been told that before as well.
Okay, any discussions of the board? Okay, anybody from the audience at this point? Okay, I see none. Read the motion. The motion is to approve the request for a ninety-day time extension for Turkey Hill number three twenty-five. Condition upon this being the final time extension for the project. So do I hear a motion? Okay, Mr. Mr. Lefever, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Wigglesworth. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the dice have it, five, nothing.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have records destruction, ah, records destruction, police and administration. It's resolution two thousand twenty-one dash forty-six. Ms. Switzer?
So we document when we destroy records so that there's a record for the historic organizations as well as it's required under the municipal code. The resolution you have before you includes police records, anything from traffic citations, accident reports. Everything has been cleared, parking tickets, alarm records. Some payroll records that they had, training records, some hard drives on their computers. And then the township records include some closed workers' comp, comp claims, some settled lawsuits and our twenty thirteen financial records. We are required to keep records for seven years on financials.
And we still have our audits and stuff like that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Weaver?
Yeah, I just had a question. Do we keep track of the number? I don't know. We can get rid of the actual records, but is there like, say stray dogs? I know that he mainly, there was a, an issue at one time. They were looking for money. Do we know, like, can we say how many stray dogs we have and, you know, like, traffic citations on a particular street or intersection? Do we have? Are we keeping a record of that information? And if not, maybe we should be.
I would maybe leave that to Jen, but I believe Lieutenant Brubaker, I believe that we do.
Okay, great. Okay. Yeah, that's. Figured that was the case, but I just wanted to double check.
Our discussion at the board. Anything from the audience again? Okay, see none. I entertain a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-one dash forty-six, authorizing destruction of the records related to the police department and administration. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Wigglesworth. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ah, second for Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the dice have five, nothing. Next up, we have a supplemental appropriations providing for the purchase of the Hemfield Fire Services, Fire Services Reserve Pumper. This is something that we discussed a couple of meetings. Now, Ms. Switzer.
Right, so we bought the, the reserve pumper using available funds, but we do need to adjust our budget to reflect the fact that we did purchase that. So what you have before you is a supplemental budget resolution. And what is asking for is a fifty thousand dollar sum from our unappropriate funds be turned into the fire services fund. And then the fire services fund pay the five hundred thirty-one thousand dollars for the pumper. This was also discussed at our budget meeting on the twenty-eighth as well. At this point, we're, we're keeping all the the expense of that in our, our fire services fund, but we could possibly use ARPA money in the future, American Rescue Funds money.
Okay, is anybody having discussion about that this morning?
No.
Anybody from the audience? Okay, see none. Motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-one dash forty-seven, authorize the movement of funds to cover the reserve fire pumper out of the fire services budget for two thousand twenty-one. Do you hear a motion? Okay, motion from Mr. Fever. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the dice have five, nothing. So next up, we have old business and that is the proposed two thousand twenty-two budget. Further discussion and comments slated for adoption consideration beginning on December first, two thousand twenty-one.
So we had our budget meeting on the twenty-eighth. There is one thing changed in that budget that you had been presented with, which was the police radios were put into the general fund as opposed to the ARPA fund. We typically list our agenda on future agenda items for discussion if the board so chooses. And it's slated for adoption on December first. Right now, it's proposed budget. It's been advertised, open to the public.
Any discussion about this point?
Just a quick, on the purchase of the radios, there'll be a reimbursement on that with, with ARPA? Is that what we discussed at budget?
We weren't sure at the time. We, I think the decision was to put it into the general fund budget and then make that decision later on because the, 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 yeah, the, the rules have not been finalized yet.
I got you.
Yes, it's one of those, we'll seek reimbursement, wants to be kind of know what the, that, what the items are in the bill kind of thing, so.
Sounds good.
And we, we are pretty sure though, just for the record, that we will be able to, after the fact, reimburse an expense because that's, that kind of seems what, how ARPA is for.
I haven't seen anything so far. I haven't gotten through all the rules.
Well, there, there are other things we're looking backward, like, you know, that whole hazard pay and all those.
Yeah.
It'll all be looking backwards. So this would be a, a looking backwards expense too.
And it's an annual, annual report, so it's, like I said, once the report's filed, then, then it's somewhat final.
Right. Yeah, so I'm pretty, I'm mine and I'm pretty comfortable with us going that approach. We got the money to cover it and then once we know the rules, we can reimburse it.
And for your direction, I believe they have already been ordered. Yes.
And how many are we ordering, just for the record?
Thirty-four.
And we are, we're all, so we're in for fires. That includes the fire in that mix. Wasn't there, were we upgrading also other radios to besides just police? Maybe I'm mixed, confused.
Well, I, I know that, that Chief Kotmeyer was looking at fire.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know that a decision was made on what, how many, all that kind of stuff, so.
Because they're dated, those radios all dated the same time too, so if police are coming due, that means their fires come indeed too.
Right.
Maybe for the benefit of the audience and the, those that are online, explain what ARPA.
America Recovery Something Plan. I don't know what that stands for, but that is the, the federal stimulus for all of our COVID-related issues that is now kind of becoming a long-drawn-out process that will be long beyond when you actually need to be stimulated financially, so. But it's gonna be utilized over the next couple of years for purchases outside of what we would do for a general fund, more on the infrastructure and capital reserve side of things, things like the radius, roads, although we can't use them for roads, but stormwater, those kind of things. Okay. So we covered the, we, we did not take action on this one. That's what we're talking about yet.
It's just discussion.
Okay. Okay, anything else at this point? On the, related to the budget? When, when did we set up the finance admin meeting? Do we have that date set for that?
Eleventh.
Was it the eleventh? So we are, we are setting up the finance admin meeting for the eleventh to talk about the other issue. I just, again, will express a little concern with that, that, that approach I say in that meeting. But we will try looking at this from a comprehensive way, so. Okay, moving on to our agenda, new business MS four, October quarterly report. So who's gonna do this? Is it gonna be Mr. Hane or?
That's gonna be me, I guess.
Okay, so you're putting your MS four hat on now too.
Exactly.
Multiple hats going from fire services to MS four to land development.
So MS four, we asked for a quarterly report from our engineer who administers our MS four program, which addresses stormwater flow in and out of the township. And this quarterly report reviews really mimics what we had talked about at a staff meeting with the engineer. Our annual report has been submitted for this year, which is great news. We're waiting for a response from DEP. The Stormwater Management Permit Review and Asses- Assessment with staff is also being reviewed at that meeting. And we discussed edits to the MCM plans, which is, Scott, you're gonna have to help me out. Or maybe Scott Russell understands those, the MCMs.
They don't control measures, they are.
Thank you.
You beat me to it.
And very much changes to those measures were discussed. We also talked about a IDDE, which is a
Solicit discharge.
Solicit discharge. At Glenbrook Court and we worked with the property owner to have him take a, a wall that he built in the stream out, which we were notified that was there. And in fact, the, the wall has been removed. What, whether outfall discharge characteristics, the DMA is working through all the BMPs, which is best management practices, which is basically the swales and the basins that we have throughout the township to make sure that they're all functioning correctly. And they've done forty-two outfalls and they have two hundred and twenty-one to do. It's difficult to do those outfalls because it has to have certain rainfall and it has to stop at a certain time so that the samples can get into the lab at a certain time. So it takes a little bit of time, but they are working through those. I have no idea what PCSM inspections are. Ah, but we have five quadrants of BMPs. We have done three of those so far. And we are, need to do number two and number five. Number two will be done next year. And then five the following year. And then we start the process over again with our new permit from DEP.
Yeah, those PCMs are post-construction stormwater management plans. Those are our storm basins and stuff like that.
Thank you. Thank you. We did change slightly. We had, we were trying a split method of having township staff do some of the tracking and then DMA do some of the tracking. That didn't work very well. Uh, so now DMA is doing all the tracking and all the notifications. So that we have it in a nice package and it's being tracked appropriately. And then they discuss training. We have monthly training sessions with Public Works on various subjects. Uh, that's handled by our stormwater person in staff, and he is assisted by DMA's. Representative that handles our storm or our MS four program. So that's the quarterly report. During part of that staffing, then we also discuss possible stormwater projects that we are looking to do. And getting a baseline moving forward with some of those projects so that we're ready to go when money becomes available. And I'm sure if you have any questions, Scott, or I could answer them.
Any questions at this point? I'll give some feedback on door to door when we get later in the meeting, but I can tell you the number one door to door issue was stormwater. Not traffic. Speeding was a very close second. Uh, but stormwater was the number one issue that people, when I knocked on their doors, wanted to show me problems. And I Cindy knows was brought up to speed with every every one of them that I encountered, so. Um, but there was, there was a number of them. We actually have one bigger one with Parkview. Is is it Parkview? What's the street right here?
Westview, Westwood.
West, no, wait.
Park Avenue.
Park Avenue. So Park Avenue at the back corner uh down here with uh. The stream right there, um, in our area where we're going to be putting our future. Plot of growing area plots. Uh, that is an area that frequently floods. It's a flood plain. We have probably a dozen residents now who have, now that they know I was aware of it by doing door to door, have emailed. I've shared most of the emails with Cindy at this point. Lots of photos, stuff like that, wet backyards there. They all say the same message, um, and I don't think the residents are necessarily. Collaborating with one another, uh, but the message is every years it's gotten more difficult to maintain that yard stay wet or longer. And that the the flooding is increasing, that part of it is driven by the rain cycles we've had for the last couple of years, which has been extremely wet. We already haven't had a a dry drought period in a long time now. Uh, but there's probably also some truth to it, too, that there might be some things that might be driving some additional stormwater that way, too. So it's just something that we're gonna have to look at and something I'll probably take a personal interest in. Um, because there's that, that was that many people that complained uh for that one in particular. We also had one up in the Indian Springs area, that one street I showed you where that whole cul-de-sac was underwater.
That was very strange.
Yeah, it was very strange, and there's, and that wasn't one that was on our rare screen, and it was actually a talented project to improve things. I can't imagine how bad it was. Before some additional landlets got put up there, but we have, we have pictures of uh some stormwater events for that, too. There's two, two ones that now have hopped on the rare screen that weren't really there before. They're actually have some pretty decent flooding behind them, so.
Harry was even shocked at that one.
I think some of it could be groundwater, too. I mean, I knew that there's a county observation well up near Reamstown, but. You can see that in the past couple of years, the groundwater level has come up between six inches and a foot. So some marginal areas could, you know, could be not from above, but from below.
Well, that's funny you say that because that is actually complaint number three from Indian Springs and Mill Creek. Since the SS Quina River Basin imposed those moratoriums on this that reduced our pumping. Uh, the some pumps in Mill Creek and Indian Springs are constantly running now. Uh, because we don't have the wells drawn down, the table water and the artesian wells, which is our pressurized system. Is pushing all that well water all the way up to the surface now. Uh, so that is, and Cindy's aware of that, too, but we had, we had a number of complaints about that, and that could be also driving. Some of those Indian Springs stormwater issues, too, just like you said, that ground doesn't have any place to receive the water. Um, it's already ground is now saturated, and now you got the just no water. It's gotta go somewhere. Okay, so anything else on the MS four report? Any questions on the MS four report? No. I think just to make a record, I'll take a motion to accept the report. Okay, motion for Mr. La Fever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second for Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. La Fever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, I said five nothing. Uh, next manager's report. Ms. Switzer, you get to do all the talking this meeting.
I know. Okay, so um, we have quite a few projects coming up for bid opening beginning of this next year. We've got Central Road South, which is scheduled for for January. We have Church Street paving. And then we hopefully have the Old Wars Town Road Bridge Project in February. So it's gonna be a busy couple of months. Uh, Central Road, not a whole lot to report on that. Uh, Sand Tech, our contractor. Has uh completed all the right away acquisitions, so that takes us one step closer to the bid opening. Uh, Church Street, again, nothing new to report on that one either. Uh, just working through the process. Old Wars Town Road, again, still uh working the process, nothing new to report. They still tell me that we're going to meet that deadline. For the lead date. Farmingdale Road, we're working through the multimodal and the green light go grant documentation. It's all been signed by the township. It is now sitting with Penda, waiting for their counter signatures, and then they'll come back to us. Stony Battery Road Trail, uh, we did send those notification letters to five eighty. Five eighty one and snow, I'm sorry. Yeah, five eighty one, six oh one for the deferment recall. I did have a meeting with KRM Day, which is Baron Industries at the corner of Nolt and Stony Battery. To talk to them about their deferment call and to discuss uh putting the. Trail on Nolt and getting some compensation back and forth for the deferment that they want to release for the sidewalk. And curbing on Stony Battery. And uh, so that seemed to go well, and we'll, I'll send that notice out once we get a little bit further along. So that they are now also on the same timeline.
Uh, the March twenty two deadline will be just when the paving window reopens again, so.
Right, and Baron was was fine with that uh timeline as well, so it's just a matter of getting the paperwork to them.
We get another continuation of the Scott Wigglesworth Trail System.
We did talk about the twenty twenty two draft budget. It's scheduled for the twelve one board meeting. Nestle Road, Central Road, I reached out to the engineer regarding a hard stop at that intersection as opposed to the yield. Staff didn't have any strong issues with it, but I'm still waiting for feedback from our traffic engineer. And that'll be a a traffic commission uh comment. Also was asked to look at Chapel Forge and Hunter's Path and potentially do a switch or repositioning of the stop signs. Again, staff has no issues, but uh waiting for the engineer to weigh in.
So is that just readjusting them or flipping the legs in the intersection they're on?
Flipping.
Okay, we're gonna do like lots of flashing signs and all this other stuff to go along with it, then?
Yes.
That has not gone well the last couple of times.
No, yeah. It's still under discussions, so uh again, a traffic.
Yeah, not not against it, but just like the lessons learned, that's what we did for running pump and stuff like that. We got almost. Have to have those type B flashing beacons, probably need to paint the road, who knows what else, just so people, when they're driving in their days. And they've always been stopping, don't stop, and when the ones that were always used to going through, don't blow through the stop sign.
Even with the yield going to a stop, we we need to.
Yeah, we're gonna need the same thing for that one, too.
Spring Valley Road speed bumps, uh, still waiting for the engineer to get back to us. I did relay to him the fact that uh three. He needs to maybe look at two or at least space in further apart. So again, that's a a pending matter. I also had a conversation with Doug Modder from Homestead Village regarding a conceptual roundabout at Community Way. They have purchased three fourteen Good Drive, which is the old American Cancer Center building. And we're looking to see if a roundabout might fit into that situation. We're still evaluating that, but it's possible that that actually might fit.
And just just to, it just probably echoes, so the whole board's kept informed. I I do have concerns about what that now is turning into the cost for that. Because they're looking for us to buy that property, which is more than doubling the cost of bringing it around the belt. And when we originally discussed this with doing the stuff in Community Way, the the idea was that the nonprofits would be making a contribution to the cost. And doing things like donating right away and stuff like that. Now, buying a property outright and doubling the cost of a roundabout is starting to get to be a very. Expensive proposition, so. And I also don't feel comfortable because now the other community members along Community Way, all the other nonprofits are. Not all that seemed all that supportive of the project, so kind of we're going out on a limb for one. Property under along that road with the rest of them not necessarily supporting it, one outright saying it's not needed to be done, being driver. So I just think we need to have some further discussions.
In fairness to Homestead, too, they would like to lease the building, but they or or sell it, whichever, uh, but they can't because. If the roundabout might go there, they have to disclose that, and it affects their their marketing of that.
So what's the next step?
Uh, it's probably gonna go to the planning group to further discuss and and get some direction.
Then we have our.
What was the other one I needed to add?
Yeah, that plan group means it's gonna be a long one. It's gonna be a marathon session, though.
Yeah, it's gonna be a double, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just think if we can kind of look at that more of a holistic look. Because quite frankly, just make a right and right out might be the solution. No, no one's gonna like that answer, but if it truly is a safety problem, do a right and right out. We're doing this, the traffic signal improvement is on good or on uh good and Marietta. Um, that entrance, the other entrance on Community Way is well beyond Farmingdale Road entrance, so you should be able to make full lefts and out. Without having to dodge traffic. So maybe that's just an entrance that. It's just too close, and typically when you get too close, it's a right and right out, or you prohibit left turns at certain times of day.
And the cost has certainly risen with that purchase.
Yeah, it's almost a two million dollar project now, and that's starting to get pretty cost prohibitive.
So in terms of uh.
If I may, just a quick question on that. I've got no problem with it going to planning for evaluation. But why wouldn't traffic be involved in that? As part of the planning, as part of the.
You mean the traffic commission?
Yeah.
Realistically, that's, this is, that type of stuff is more of a discussion of the whole board. It's because it's a, it's a big infrastructure project, so like traffic signal projects and stuff like that, that really becomes a whole board. Discussion is the way I kind of look at it. And you do have, I mean. Yeah, realistically, we're not gonna be making any decisions in the planning. It's just getting information. But I I think the better place to present is not the traffic commission. We do our thing, and we present it to the whole board right here. Okay, that's the way I kind of look at it. I think, given the implications with it and the fact that you have some there for and against it, I think it'd be good to make it a whole board decision.
Oh, no doubt. Okay, thank you.
So I did briefly talk about the uh MS four group with staff that we had and the MS four course quarterly report. Uh, we also had a meeting with the Public Safety Working Group this evening, right before our meeting. The primary topic of discussion was how to advance the discussion with East Petersburg Borough Council regarding the assisted. Assisting funding the reserve pumper unit. I don't know that there's anything resolved. We need to get some further clarification on some things that East Pete has requested. So that's kind of a work in progress.
Can I just ask one question about that? Have they presented a counter offer?
That's what we need clarification on, uh, what they presented. I mean, it, the way it was written, it doesn't seem, I guess, realistic, so.
Okay, but they did, they did kind of counter offer or something, and it sounds like that.
And I've got several meetings scheduled for various other groups, the planning group, park and rec, and the admin finance group. I made an attempt at doing a planning report. Probably the most interesting one was probably the timetable for the special exception and conditional use ordinance. LCPC, Lancaster County Planning Commission, is going to be reviewing it on eleven twenty two. Our planning commission will be doing it on twelve eight, and then it'll be up for board consideration on twelve fifteen. The sign ordinance, I recently received a draft copy of that from DMA, and that's going to go to the planning group for review. And then eventually find its way back to the board, probably in early January. Eagles Mirror Investment Billboard Conditional Use Hearing, we had that held on ten twenty, and we continued into eleven thirteen seventeen. You have gotten in amended restated application from them with all their attachments to it, as well as DMA's to review letters. Uh, stormwater management and subdivision and land development ordinances. Uh, projects, Woodcrestville, we had a conversation with the owner regarding expansion plans in relation to the master plan. They're just conceptual at this point, but they're kind who trying to infill what they have out there. Nine oh two Dorsey Road is simply a stormwater management project at this point for a small addition. And Belko Credit Union, which is next to that fish place, that empty lot on Centerville. They have done their traffic impact study, and that was sent to our engineer for review. The Stalfer project is under engineering review for their final plan. City of Lancaster, which is that pump station uh for Centerville and Old Tree. Uh, working through the engineering process on that one. And Mavis Tire, which is the old Friendly's Building on Columbia Avenue. Uh, the applicant uh was grant the township a ninety day time extension uh to take action on the plan. They are, they are. Uh, working to gather their information together to present to the board supervisors. And that's the end of my report unless there's questions.
Okay, any discussions for the manager? Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, we're gonna. Pretty quickly, moving on to public comment for residents or taxpayers of East Hemfield Township, so open up the floor to public comment.
We just asked, did you use the microphone if you want to speak?
Okay, you're just here to enjoy the meeting. Okay, appreciate it, thank you. I know you enjoy the meeting every once in a while, too, so thank you. Anybody online at this point, I'm not.
There's no one on Zoom requesting to speak.
Okay, well, then that's gonna make this a. Well, on public comment side, we'll give some feedback then real quick. So we are really quick here, so. Doing door to door, I hit probably talked to about on the low end, six fifty to about seven hundred people uh over the last ten weeks doing door to door. Past door to doors and comments in the past, there would be a lot of comments that we don't have a plan for transportation. I can tell you that that turned the moment State Road opened up. So the residents are very happy with that, and then when I tell them that Centerville's coming next for the January bid date and explain what's gonna be going on there. After they get done the groaning of that what it's gonna be like for the first two years, and I tell them it'll look like State Road when it's done after two years. Um, they're in general pretty happy at that point, so they, and and then I also pointed out our official map, which documents all of our planned transportation projects. So on the transportation and traffic and towns residents seem pretty happy at this point, because they actually see things happening now finally. Uh, I just explained that there's a lot of times when a lot of development goes through, there's a lag until the infrastructure comes catches up, and now we're at the point where. Lag where stuff is starting to catch up at this point. Uh, stormwater was the number one issue. Um, among residents, traffic and or speeding would be a very close second uh of the residents and. That were brought up. In fact, those were primarily the two main items. I'll I'll relay to Cindy, I have been sharing feedback. I've been chatting with the Spring Valley. Uh, speed bumps to Cindy to share with the traffic commission, and I'll be glad to talk to any traffic commission one on one. Uh, with that feedback, I think it'd be good for you to hear some of the comments both for and against at this point, play to that stuff. Um, so that was a a much more specific uh feedback in that one area. Um, but in general, a lot of good, a lot of good feedback. There were some communication issues with one employee that. Has now been resolved um with, which Cindy's aware of. So there was a number of people I talked to that had filed or had or in discussions with a couple of things that just kind of got dropped. Uh, but Cindy's been working to rectify that, and that I'm not anticipating that we're gonna have that problem going forward, so that's, that's been, that was pretty positive, too. So those will be, those were the two biggest items that we're gonna be facing, and so the traffic commission is definitely. Gonna have go over, explain the whole process. Every time someone brought speeding about, we put the speed sign out. Speed signs turned off, it's done on purpose, they're collecting speed data, they're actually doing a speed study, then they flip the sign on to see if. Uh, it is actually part of studies, see if people actually slow down when they see the flashing sign. Then the police download the information and confirm whether there's a problem, and they also use it for enforcement purposes to see when's the best time to put enforcement. to see when's the best time to put enforcement detail out there. So the residents kind of got a little bit of an education about the whole process. And I told them if they have speeding complaints, not to make more work for you guys, but the the send to the manager and you would forward them to the traffic commission. But I do think the public works, and I think traffic commission is definitely gonna be the busy groups for the next couple of years ahead, based off what I've been hearing for the residents, I think, stormwater and traffic and speeding are the two biggest things we're gonna be dealing with in the years ahead. The Penn State Hospital was very well received. Even among some of the residents along Harrisburg Pike, there was a couple that were never going to please, but majority of the residents saw a lot of positives to having the hospital here in the township and having it close by and recognize that there's a a problem with regional closing like it did and that and some of the long waits right now they're occurring for at the ERs and stuff like this, and this would be helping out. So that was actually viewed as a pretty big positive at this point. The other thing that was a positive was the farmland preservation resolution that we read off every year. So that with the residents was also very positive. We've received a lot of did have concerns about the rate of development. And when I explained that we have a whole one third of township that we basically have committed to not rezoning. That's all zoned ag right now, and that we've had that policy in place for over eight years now. That's actually was a pretty good reception, too. So most of them accepted the fact that that the property has right to develop with what their property is known for and appreciated that we were looking out for all the ag land that's north of two eighty three. I said, that's just kind of the some of the feedback I got. In general, the residents that I was talking to were relatively happy, and I think that showed up in elections. With that, any other public comments? Okay, well, this is nice. So we're gonna adjourn the meeting at seven forty. We had a short meeting.
On the on the ARPA.
Yeah.
Any one on the board has any recommendations? They need to get into Cindy by the twentieth. If if they could get in there before our meeting.
Yep.
On the eleventh, that would be pretty, too.
So welcome. What what inspired you to?
I was born and raised in the temple.
Okay.